Order, and would like to welcome everyone that's in attendance. If you're watching on YouTube, we welcome you also tonight. Before we get started, I would like to recognize Commissioner Efer for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If y'all would bow with me, let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight. Once again, thank you for the many blessings. Lord, I pray for strength and wisdom as this board makes decisions for the county. And Lord, I pray a special blessing for all of our emergency workers, our doctors, our nurses, respiratory therapists, Lord, everyone that's on the front lines is fighting this COVID issue. I just pray, Lord, that you'll just comfort those who have lost loved ones and just lift them up during these times. And Lord, I pray a special blessing for the COVID, the vaccine, that you'll just touch it and heal people. And Lord, just please make this thing go away. And I pray for our military and our police and just the ones that protect and serve us daily, that you'll just keep us safe. These things, I ask in your presence, name do we pray. Amen. Y'all would stand with me, miss, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Efer. I think the commissioners that sit on the board have had time to look over the agenda and would like to ask if we make adjustments or whether or not we want to approve the agenda as it's presented.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Allman's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Efer, I heard you first, so second.
Mr. Chairman, I need to amend that motion.
Okay.
We have a budget amendment that we need to add to that and make a motion that we add this addition to that. It's in everyone's packet.
Okay. And I believe that would be added to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Efer. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. The first item of business is public comments, but we did not have anyone to sign up for public comments. But I'm going to give anybody in the audience opportunity, if they want to come up and give public comments, now's the time. So if there's anyone that would like to come up and give us some public comments, we're ready to hear those. I don't see anybody real excited about coming up, so. Public comments, we're not going to have tonight. Let me call on Candace Louter, EDC Director. She has the next item, which is Economic Development and Incentive Grant. Candace?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to come forward tonight on behalf of the Economic Development Commission to request support for a property tax-based business development grant of 55% for five years for a business that is diversifying its operations to manufacture therapeutic botanical products located within the town of Oakboro. This project will create approximately 20 new jobs with salaries above the current county average and will result in new taxable investments of at least $1 million in real property improvements and $4.5 million in machinery and equipment over the next five years. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the project, and I appreciate your consideration of the grant request.
Any questions of Ms. Candace? Hearing no questions, we need to hold a public hearing and declare the public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this grant request? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak against this grant request? Seeing none, I call the public hearing closed. And I look, seek the board to make a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to vote that we approve a property tax incentive 55% for a period of five years associated with the investment of the minimum of 5.5 million and resulting in the creation of 30 new jobs.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Jordan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ferr. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Next item, we have Mr. Clinton Swerjen, Tax Administrator, to talk about the 2020 delinquent tax report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm glad to be with you here tonight. According to General Statute 105, 369A, the tax collector must report to the governing body the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year, which are liens on real property. And upon receipt of the report, the governing board must order the tax collector to advertise these tax liens. As of January 22nd, the total amount of unpaid county real property taxes for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2021, that are liens on real property amount to $1,894,687.34. And upon order by the Board of Commissioners, these tax liens will be advertised in the month of March 2021, and the stated amount will be reduced as our collections office continues to accept payments. Delinquent notices are going to be mailed tomorrow in an effort to collect these taxes, and I've attached the report for your viewing to give you some history. I know Scott and Peter wasn't here last year. That number last year was 1,913,9143, so we're almost $20,000 better this time now than we were last year. And the report's there for your viewing, so I would request the board to issue an order to advertise these tax liens in the month of March 2021. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Clinton? Don't have any questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we order to advertise these tax liens during the month of March 2021.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Allman, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Clinton. Item number four, Clinton's with us already, and he's joined by Charles Johnson, Real Property Supervisor, so.
Yeah, I want to take my collector's hat off now and put on my tax assessor's hat. I'm glad to be with y'all again, and I did bring Charlie with me tonight, and I didn't just bring him to make me look better, he is going to talk some tonight, too. But I want to give you a quick rundown of revaluation for 2021. What is revaluation and why do we even perform this? And the simple answer is, it's required by state law. We have to do it. We're required by state law to revalue property at least once every eight years, but we are on a four-year cycle here, and we do that to maintain equitable and uniform property values across the county quicker and faster. Now, the last revaluation we had was in 2017, and so the next one is, or actually was January 1st of 2021. And revaluation means determining the fair market value of all the properties in Stanley County based on that date of January 1st, 2021. The tax office sets property values to reflect the fair market values for all properties inside Stanley County. There's about 40,000 properties in the county. And the tax office gathers all kinds of sales data from excise tax on deeds to multiple listing services to letters we mail out to new buyers. So we get all that data, and it's a lot of data. And for almost all properties in the county, the revaluation is going to be some kind of change, either up or down, but it's highly unlikely that it's going to stay exactly the same as what it was in 2017. These increases and decreases will change by neighborhood and property type, and it can be impacted by all different kinds of market forces. Areas of the county experiencing high growth could see values increase more than in areas with slower growth. So for example, Locust is definitely increasing in value faster than Baden is. It's just a fact because of its close proximity to Charlotte, the new construction there, how many houses are being built and is being sold. So the value of your property does affect your share of the taxes paid, but it's only half of the equation. The other half is the tax rate, which this board is responsible for setting. A lot of times, people will call the office when they get their revalue notice, and they want to know what their tax bill is going to be. And I tell them I have no idea, because the Board of Commissioners doesn't usually set that rate till sometime in June, and I'm sending the notices that way earlier than that for the value. So the simple way I tell everybody to remember it is your property tax value times the tax rate gives you your actual tax bill. The property tax rate is determined by the budgetary needs of the area in which the property is located. Towns and cities and fire districts collect property taxes based on their unique needs, and governing boards of these taxing units decide what services the jurisdiction is going to provide and how much revenue is going to be needed to provide those services. Property taxes are the primary source of revenue for all local governments in North Carolina. Here in Stanley County, property taxes make up almost 50% of the budget here in the county. So what my office does is very important, because if you think if I disappear, then half of the revenue and half of all the services the county has is going to disappear also. So property taxes is very important. Cities and counties don't collect income taxes, and they can't implement additional sales tax without approval from the General Assembly. So even more importance, you know, of the property tax. So that's a little bit about revaluation and why we do it. I'm going to let Mr. Johnson come up here and talk a little bit about the timeframe for the notices to be mailed out and then the appeal process, and then I'll come back up here and close.
Good evening, Charles Johnson. Nice to see you all again. As far as our timeframe, normally we anticipate sending out change of value notices in February, but due to the COVID pandemic, we're shooting for approximately the middle of March to get these in the mail. We're finishing up permits right now, picking up new construction, we're making final reviews of properties, and we're doing some testing. We look at approximately 40,000 parcels, and given that, you know, as much as we would like to be perfect, we know there are mistakes. We know that the taxpayer will know their property far better than we will ever know it. So once they get their notice in the mail, if they feel like that their tax value is too high, there will be instructions on how they can appeal that value. In the past, we had only office appeals with our trained, state-certified appraisers. We will probably continue to do that this go-around, but we will have the option of probably going to be doing mail-in appeals. Yet to be completely determined yet, that's kind of where we're leaning, the way that things are going with the pandemic at the moment. So your first step in the appeal process would be an informal appeal with our staff in the office. You would have 30 days from the date of your change of value notice to call us to schedule that appeal. We would hold an appeal either in office or by mail, would get you a notice then. If you still were not happy with the value we would come to an agreement on, you could make it a formal appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review, which is a five-member panel which you gentlemen appoint to sit in your place to appeal, to hear appeals. Now, I got ahead of myself slightly. If you want to appeal your property, if the taxpayer could bring us appraisals, photographs, since we do not get inside of the home, if we could get interior pictures, if we could get quotes of repairs, anything that would help us help them to come up with an equitable value. Because since we only look at the outside of the home, we need them to help us. So really, if you come in to say that your value is too high, that really give me a lot to work with. I need something to base our decision on as far as you wanting to have a reduction in value. Now, jumping back to the informal appeals with our offices, if you're not happy, you would have a formal appeal with the Board of Equalization and Review, which normally we get about 7%, 5% appeal rate. I think statewide, they fill, they usually say about 10% is what they estimate. Even if you're still unsatisfied with your value from your hearing with the Board of Equalization and Review, your third step would be to go to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. And normally, in a real appraisal year, we have about 10 people, 10 to 12 properties that go. Of those that actually appeal, we usually mediate and come to an agreement on the vast majority of those, and normally, we may have three or four actually make it to Raleigh. So that's kind of the process of the appeal process if you get your notice and you're not satisfied. Like I said, there's 40,000 parcels, so we have gone out and tried to take a photograph of every improved parcel in the county, and we have those on file, which helps us to see exactly what we're talking about with folks when they come in to see us. So that's kind of where we're at with the appeal process, and if anybody has any questions about that, you know, I'd be happy to answer those, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Did a good job.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, so in closing, the goal of revaluation is to create an equitable way to determine property tax values for all residents to pay their fair share of taxes. One thing Charlie did forget to mention, we are going to have a dedicated phone line that'll be on the notice for people to call, because we realize some people don't necessarily want to appeal, they just want to ask a question. And usually, that question is, what was it last year? But we realize that every phone call is not an appeal, it's actually just something, information needed. And so that line is going to be dedicated just to those appeals, and they'll become active once we mail the notices. The main thing is, I want to get across not only to you guys, but the public as well, is if they get their notice and they're not happy, before they call any one of you seven, I want them to call my office, please, because when they call you guys before they even talk to us, we don't even know what the problem is, and it's something that we likely could help them with or get worked out before they call you. So we are looking forward to the revaluation. The housing market, the residential housing market is as good as I've ever seen it in my 18-year career at the tax office right now. So the majority of taxpayers are going to get inquiries. It's just a fact. Very few people, I think, would sell their house for the tax value that we currently have on it. So we look forward to completing this and getting it done, and then beginning on the next one. Any questions? And I also tell you, we are going around, not just to the commissioners, we've already been to Locust, bless God's heart, he just had to hear this for the second time, but we've been to Locust, Norwood, Baden, and then we're going to Alamoor next week. So we're trying to hit all the municipalities, and so they'll be informed of what's going on also. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next item, we have COVID-19 update, which is always interesting to hear, and we have with us tonight Jennifer Layton, and we also have Brian Simpson, Emergency Service Director.
Good evening. I hope you guys can hear me okay. They tell me I have a megaphone in my throat in the office, so I try to control it, but if I need to speak louder, please ask me to. Thank you so much. We appreciate your approval for allowing our department to purchase the equipment necessary to keep our staff safe and comfortable throughout the changing temperatures, throughout our entire response. It'll be a year, literally, in a month or so. And so that was so critical to keeping staff morale up and helping them feel like you really cared about their safety during this process, so I want to say thank you from the bottom of our heart. I had a quick PowerPoint. I'll be happy to send it later for a reference point for you guys, because it has numbers and a lot of verbiage on it from executive orders and things like that. Unfortunately, this computer does not want to cooperate with me today, but I'll be happy to send it out for a reference. So as of 5 o'clock today, our daily new positive cases reported since Friday were 133. Granted, that is over the course of a weekend. Our current hospitalizations are 21. Our total deaths have risen to 115, and that is significant for a rural community. That's a lot of deaths for such a rural community. We have completed a total of 2,955 first doses of the COVID-19 vaccine. We held our first, second dose clinic last week and completed 31 of those. Those folks were due for theirs. A lot of folks in the community have said, what happened to all that great data, that detailed data we had earlier in the pandemic? When the state asked us to shift our focus to vaccines, it does not allow time, it takes a couple of hours every afternoon to aggregate that data. It is, so it's just not possible for us to pull it for you all in the midst of navigating scheduling vaccine, receiving vaccine, reassigning staff minute to minute, depending on what's happening during the day. So we have abbreviated that data release. However, currently, we have an estimated 602 active cases. Out of a total of 6,108 cases that we've had lab confirmed in this county, approximately 5,000 folks have recovered, 5,300 to be more precise. And as I mentioned, we've had a sizable number of deaths in this community. So Peter Ashudo called me, it doesn't surprise me, but Peter called me really rapidly this afternoon, and he said, hey, we're going to have some questions about restaurants specifically. Will you please reference that? So to do so, I printed off the current guidelines for you to have a reference point, because I know that you all are getting those angry phone calls from citizens like we are, so I brought it for you. So this is the most recent, most recent guidance we have. It says December 8th, but it has not changed, or it did worse. You're welcome. You're welcome. You can keep it in your car, so when someone asks you on the road, you can say, I have that. Let me show you. You're welcome. It's a very detailed document. For good reason. It is a lot of, it is a lot of suggestions and guidelines to meet the executive order requirements. So this is available to restaurants. They can find this online. I literally typed in NCDHHS guidance for restaurants. It popped right up in my PowerPoint. I provided a link, so when I send it out to you all, you'll be able to share it with anyone that you may know. If you look on pages, the top of page two, this is where we get a lot of complaints, okay? Page two, that sub-letter I, limit to 50% of stated fire capacity or 12 people per 1,000 square feet if there is not a fire code number available. And when no fire code number is available for outdoor dining, 12 people per 1,000 square feet number should be applied. So they should be aware of what those numbers are, because Fire Marshal issues those limitations. And so they just have to abide by that 50% capacity rule. We've seen other restaurants across the country that have gotten really creative, developing igloos and like tents and all kinds of fun things to try to create a safer environment for folks. I know that's not feasible for most restaurants, but this is currently the protocol. And if you see subsection three there, arrange the restaurant so that customers sitting at a table are not within six feet of any customer sitting at another table. Moreover, each group of customers sitting at a counter should be separated from other groups by six feet. Because again, that guidance is to not be congregating with people that you do not share a household with, to avoid cross potential transmission, right, of any illness, flu, COVID, or anything else. So that's a good reference point for you. You also mentioned, Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Ashudo, you asked about waitstaff specifically. So when I looked in the guidance, if you look on page three, it references, all those bullet points on the top of page three are addressing waitstaff, how to properly and safely engage consumers or patrons to the restaurant, you know, how to stagger their seating, and of course, below that, addressing cloth face coverings. And this has been the hot, hot topic for the last few weeks. We've had a lot of calls and a lot of complaints about restaurants not abiding by that mask mandate. It is critically important that our waitstaff, the kitchen staff, the hosting staff at all these restaurants abide by that policy, because we just don't know, we can't look at a person and tell if they're sick or not, and they could be asymptomatic in transmitting. We know that per the data of the last year. So it's critically important they abide by that rule. Of course, there is always a loophole, right? And so the loophole is, you may have a staff member who has a medical condition that does not allow them to wear a face covering. They can be exempt from wearing it. However, a face shield should be offered. It doesn't provide the same level of protection, but it does reduce exposure to other staff and the patrons. Mr. David Jenkins has encouraged restaurants to do that. If your staff feel like they cannot wear a mask because they have a medical condition, then a shield is the next best option. We're happy to help them procure those if they need those. We just want to keep our community as safe as possible. So in Executive Order 169, subsection 3.11, that is where they have limited, I didn't give you a reference to that, because it's a really long document, whereas, therefore's, right, really complicated. It references that any meeting or function held in a private room in a restaurant is covered by the capacity and other restrictions stated above, so up above in the, in the executive order, as it pertains to movie theaters, meeting spaces, and entertainment facilities. So they also have guidance on their capacity limits as it pertains to special events rooms, party rooms, things like that. And in Executive Order 189, it extends that executive order through the end of February. We don't foresee these numbers dropping off rapidly anytime soon. Now, here is the hot button issue for a lot of people in the community as well. We're going to address the elephant in the room. Everybody wants to know who is responsible for enforcing the executive order rules. It is not the Health Department. We do not have the authority to issue citations or misdemeanors as it pertains to the executive orders. So under Executive Order 189, Section 6, Enforcement 6.1, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 166A-1930A2, the provisions of this executive order shall be enforced by state and local law enforcement officers. So there has been a ping pong of responsibility on who is responsible for enforcing the executive orders. People call to the Health Department, and they place a complaint, and we say you have to place your complaint with the jurisdiction, the law enforcement in that jurisdiction where the restaurant is located, right? So if it's in Oakboro, it's going to be Oakboro Police Department. If it's in Alamoor, Alamoor Police Department, as such, right? Well, they call law enforcement. Law enforcement says, that's not our job, that's the Health Department's job. So they call us back. Do you see what happens? We go back and forth and back and forth. So I wanted to reference that for you all. We do not have the capacity to issue citations or misdemeanors for people who are violating these executive orders. In that same document, it states, the executive order may be subject to prosecution pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 166A-19.30D and is punishable as a Class II misdemeanor in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 14-288.20A. Local governments are specifically authorized and encouraged to adopt ordinances that provide law enforcement officials with the flexibility to use civil rather than criminal penalties to enforce violations of this executive order. We encourage education first, and Dave Jenkins has done so. He has visited restaurants himself. We send out our REHS-certified folks in environmental health to go out and just have the conversation and try to do education first and foremost always, and offer our support. We did have a situation that was made public because an ALE officer happened to be conducting an inspection in this community several weeks ago and was very upset that a restaurant was not following code or executive orders. So he immediately came to our department and wanted to speak to Dave Jenkins right away and report what he had seen and wanted it addressed right away. And that is how that complaint ended up in NCDHHS's lap. That was not our intention. I just want to be clear about that. He was here doing an unannounced inspection, and that's how that came to be. I know that's been also a hot button issue in the community, that we are somehow criminalizing our local restaurants, and that's not our goal. That was not our intention. I just wanted you all to be aware of that, so that if anyone asks you, you know what the executive order states. I also wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Ashudo. Thank you for asking up NC. In grad school, we studied positive behavior incentives and how you do that, and you highlight restaurants that are in compliance and following the rules. So for those families that want to feel comfortable and safe going out and having dinner, breakfast, whatever, they can do so at these restaurants. And that's a great way to encourage those restaurants to keep following the rules, because what you're doing is helping keep this community safe, and we really appreciate that. And it actually has given us some tips on where to go get our takeout for lunch, so we've used it ourselves. Okay, so another fun issue that we've dealt with the last few weeks, and I provided a table so you all could see for transparency, but again, I'll send this to you all after the fact, so you can go back and look at it. Vaccine allocation from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has been, was consistent initially and has changed significantly. I know each of you have gotten personal phone calls from people in the community that are frustrated and upset. We share that frustration. It has been a challenge within our department to decide how we can best It has been a challenge within our department to decide how we can best schedule and coordinate appointments and still meet the need in the community. We don't have enough vaccine. That's just the fact of the matter. So initially, late December, we received an allotment of 500 doses, and then we started to receive shipments of about 400 doses pretty consistently, about once a week. And then it came to an abrupt halt. We were told mid-January, right, NCDHHS had get shots in arms, get them in arms, get every vaccine out of your refrigerators and your freezers quickly because if you don't, the federal government will not send vaccine to North Carolina anymore. Problem, because we have a lot of people over 65 in this county that need a vaccine, in fact, approximately 12,000, that probably need a vaccine or may want a vaccine. So that's an issue. So we ramped up. We went from having a nice inventory as we were trying to sort of scale up our vaccine clinics to burning through it within the span of a week. That was quick. Our staff went from a soft rollout of 30 patients to over 300 in the span of only a couple of weeks. And it has been a beautiful and smooth process at the vaccine clinic. Behind the scenes, it's a whole nother ball of wax. We're navigating the numbers, so it's a little bit challenging. When we didn't receive any more vaccine, we did what any rural health department would do. Dave Jenkins called his partners. Andy Lucas has been a great advocate for us, Andy and Dave, as well as Brian Simpson from Emergency Management. We called Atrium Health and we said, Brian Freeman, can you help us? Because if we don't get additional vaccine, we're going to have to cancel over 1,000 appointments, and we don't want to do that. That's a lot of phone calls, right? A lot of days making phone calls and a lot of angry, frustrated people. They came through. They transferred 1,000 doses to us. We were able to finish out that week, and that was fantastic. That saved Wendy Grocock's team so much work. She was so thankful and appreciative. And then we ran into another bump, and we said, if we could just get another 500 doses, Brian Freeman, we could probably get another day or two done and won't have to reschedule those folks either. And Brian Freeman said, well, let me call Atrium, let me see what I've got. They called back within a couple of days. We had an answer. They transferred another 500 doses. That saved us from having to reschedule additional patients or individuals in this community, and that was critically important. However, that does mean that we have to allocate a certain number of doses for Atrium Health staff, frontline healthcare workers. We don't mind doing that. They're in that priority group one, so we are happy to accommodate them, and they don't have to drive all the way to Charlotte to get their vaccine. So we do have some blocked off for their staff. Second dose shipments, we don't worry too much about. The state says it's guaranteed. If you have given out your vaccine as we have asked, your second dose shipments will come in time for second dose administration. So we don't worry about those. It's the first dose allotments we're very concerned about. So we were also asked two weeks ago, clear out your backlog. You have a waiting list of over 1,500 people. Get rid of it. Okay, so we did. Wendy pulled together a large team within our department, and we started calling people, and we scheduled appointments, hoping that our vaccine allotment would be the same as it had always been. But bad news, after we scheduled everybody for appointments waiting for these vaccines, NCDHHS threw us a curveball and said, we don't have any more vaccine available. We'll get back to you later. Hence, all the angry phone calls that you all have received and that we have received. Andy has had to deal with these phone calls as well. Our hotline has been updated numerous times in Verizon, so phone calls are not going through. It's up and running now. So we have really struggled. We received our allocation allotment notification, I think, late Thursday night. It was 300 doses with thousands of people scheduled for appointments. We were disappointed, and we were deflated. Wendy, poor Wendy, is like, now I've got to call over 1,000 more people and tell them that we don't know when you're going to get your vaccine. We're going to try to get some more vaccine for you. So Commissioner Jordan has called, I don't know how many people, so has County Manager Lucas. Brian Simpson has called. We've called friends all across the state. Please help us. Do you have any to spare? Of course, no one does because they're in the same boat. So we will receive 300 doses starting this week for the next three weeks, and that is all we get. So Friday, Thursday, Brian Freeman happened to be in the building. We heard his voice, bad mistake, and we asked him to stop by the conference room, and we said, look, Brian, we really need your help. Can you please go to Atrium and get us a couple more hundred doses? Get us through next week, and we won't have to reschedule anybody this coming week. And so by late Friday night, he notified us, yes, I'm going to help you guys. We're able to pull a couple hundred to help get you through, which means that we're not going to have to reschedule those folks again for Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. That being said, there were people that were scheduled for first dose appointments Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that we have no choice but to move those folks. So again, you will still get an angry phone call. I'm so sorry. We are working to remedy that issue. So that is where we are with allocation. This is a global issue. This is not a North Carolina limited issue. We only have so much vaccine available. Manufacturers are ramping up. We expect more vaccine to come. However, we know that the state has put a priority on these large events because it shows, it reflects that the state has done what they've been asked to do, which is vaccinate as fast as you can. However, that puts our senior citizens in this community at a disadvantage because they're not going to drive to Charlotte, park, and walk a few blocks to get that vaccine when they can drive right here and stay in their car and never have to get out. So we'll continue to work with the state's requirements to be able to continue to receive vaccine. Now, if that wasn't fun enough, they sent us a four-page guidelines to come with our 300 doses last week, and this is where it's like chutes and ladders. If we do not meet their if-then conditions, we don't receive any more vaccine. They've changed our shipping schedule, which means they've asked us not to schedule any first-dose clinics on Mondays, Tuesdays, or Wednesdays. We recommend Thursdays and Fridays only. Our CVMS data must be entered by close of business the following Monday. That means the minute that that person gets a shot, we have to have runners bring a paperwork into the building rapidly, and so we have a team inside, and they're firing away, putting data in. Because if all our data is not in by close of business the following Monday, so sorry, you may not get vaccine again. So it's critical. That is a critical puzzle piece for us to continue to receiving the vaccine. However, they prefer if you get that data in within 24 hours. So, you know, we'll be like Santa Claus, right? We'll work around the clock 24/7. We'll get it done, no problem. The percentage of vaccine administered to historically marginalized and minority populations should meet or exceed population estimates. They did not define clearly what that means. Historically, what that has meant in documents around public health has meant communities of color, right? So our African-American communities, Latinx, Asian communities, but they didn't define that for us. We have made a request. You need to be more clear on what that means, and we will meet the requirement. We're waiting to hear back. Operational guidelines. They also told us, wait to schedule appointments until vaccine has arrived. Thank you. We learned that lesson in the last two weeks. So we will not be able to schedule appointments until we have vaccine in hand or we know it's coming. Develop a waitlist. We worked really hard to get rid of that waitlist, but now that's their recommendation. So we have not decided if we're going to follow that protocol or not. It was really hard to dig out from under that pile. And it makes residents in this community very anxious, and we don't want to create more anxiety for them. Set aside a block of appointments for healthcare workers, care managers, churches, or other underserved community members. That's complicated. That means you're prescreening a lot of people over the phone to say they meet those historically marginalized population requirements so that we can say that 14% of our vaccines that were administered every week went to that group. That's complicated, very complicated, and very tricky. I don't know how we're going to meet that requirement. We have discussed it in a number of ways, and we've asked for more clarification. Locate vaccine clinics in highly accessible locations for historically marginalized populations. Atrium Health may be able to help with that because they have a mobile clinic that can do that really quickly, and so we are working with them and our partners in the community to be able to do that. And so I just wanted to introduce Gary Lewis really quickly because Gary Lewis is the Chair of the Stanley County Minority Health Council, and I just want him to introduce himself. This is the group that we're going to work with to be able to meet the needs of those historically marginalized groups. And so Gary, are you here? I'll give him a couple of minutes.
Commissioners, how are you doing, sir? The Stanley County Minority Health Council, you all need to know who we are. Up front is your 2018 report, and it has under the Health, Human and Health Services, the continued collaboration with Stanley County Minority Health Council to address health disparities. 2014, the Health Department saw the mortality rate for African-Americans, heart disease, cancers, was as far as the minority population in Stanley County, 16%. 16% that that particular population had more mortality, a higher mortality rate than everybody else. That's not good. So the Health Department blessed their hearts, given all these things. They came up with the idea to have to get the Minority Health Council started. Since 2014, we meet the first Monday in the office there at the Health Department. The person that really put the shot in our arm was Jennifer Layton, and of course, the former director who's no longer here. But we thank goodness for their interest in the African-American community. And so Jennifer, she moved on. She's still with us, and now we have Wendy, who's giving us a shot in the left arm to keep our Minority Council going. And so, excuse me, and so why am I here? You have a tremendous responsibility. Of course, you already know that, okay? And what I've done is last week, we were made aware that Atrium Health was going to do the vaccine at St. Delight. That's great. So what they're doing is going to the grassroots community or the underserved community to get this COVID vaccine done. So Minority Health Council, what I did, now, there's a lot of people on our council. We have African-Americans, we have Hispanic, and Asian representatives. These are all volunteers that meet the first Monday. Of course, we've been meeting virtually, and they're volunteers. I think only two of us, only two are retired. So all these people that come to this meeting, they are basically working people, volunteers, okay? Asian, African-American, and Hispanic, okay? And so we have contacts, the people that's on the council, they're from different parts of Stanley County, Norwood Bay, New London. And so as you make, as you continue your efforts to meet these standards that the state is giving to the Health Department, bless their hearts, the Health Council, we're here. Minority Health Council is here. I have also a list of some agencies that I've talked, I mean, some church organizations, church organizations that I have personally talked to, and I want you to understand this very, very carefully. The African-American church, the voice of the church has still, it has a great voice in the community. It has a respected voice. And if you can get these people involved in your planning process, I would just like to encourage you to do so. And of course, the Minority Health Council, we'll be glad to do what we can as well. And I have a list, I don't know if you would prefer that I give that to the manager or how you would prefer that, but the list here, I've talked to each person that's affiliated with this association for contact.
Is it Pam, Wendy?
Sir?
He got me or Wendy.
Okay, I'll give it to Wendy, okay? And we commend the Health Department, we commend you to, as you try to meet this pandemic in our county. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate it. Do you have any questions for me, or do you want me to just hand it over to Brian Simpson for the moment?
I have a question for you, Ms. Layton.
Yes, sir.
I saw on, I guess it was on Facebook today, a statement that says, do not call the hotline, or do not get your second shot if you've taken a shot elsewhere.
Yeah, so we put out information, so we know that the state, the state sent a large amount of doses. If you saw the news this morning, it was about 20,000 first-dose allocation shipment went to the Bank of America event. We recognize that while a lot of those people that were on that waitlist and that we scheduled appointments for, and we've moved them once and maybe even twice at this point, they may have said, you know what? I'm tired of waiting. Stanley County Department, somebody's going to drive me to Charlotte. I'm going to Charlotte. We recognize that some of those folks may have already gotten their vaccine, and if they have, that's fantastic. Please call us. We'll take you off the list so we don't have an empty slot sitting and waiting for you on the day that your new appointment is scheduled. That's the purpose of that post, is just so folks, and we have had folks call in this morning and throughout the day and say, look, I've already gotten my vaccine. I don't need your appointment anymore. Great, that opens up a slot for the next person. Thank you.
I took that, when I read it, the comment was that if I had a shot given in Charlotte, that I'm not supposed to call the Stanley County Health Department to get my second shot.
Oh, that is correct. That is correct.
So if a citizen gets a shot outside of the county, and they want to come and get their second shot here, we're not going to allow them to do that.
Yes, sir. And the reason being is because the state allocates the exact amount of second doses to match that first, all the first doses we have administered. So if we were to administer everyone's second dose that got it in Charlotte, or Raleigh, or anywhere else, we would not have enough second doses to cover the citizens that we provided vaccines for.
And I know, I asked David the last time he was here, we're not getting information on citizens that have had shots outside of the county. Is that correct?
So they, over the weekend, the state did an update to the CVMS data system. Bless their hearts, they do it every weekend. And we explained, I think collectively across different health departments, when they asked us to match the demographics of our community, we said, well, how are we supposed to know that if we can't get reports out of CVMS? So we were notified around lunchtime today. That's a new functionality that I believe Patricia will have access to. She'll be able to actually pull reports out of there so we can see if we're meeting those requirements the state has asked us to do. We'll be able to look and see how many folks in our community have received a vaccine because we only have a number, 2955. Some of those folks live in our community, some don't, right? Other folks in surrounding counties have come here when they've gotten an appointment and been able to come and get a vaccine. Or if they're healthcare workers, they work in Stanley County but live in surrounding counties. We coordinated with medical offices the first few weeks that we had vaccine available to get the ball rolling and to make it a little bit easier, and we told those medical offices, we want to accommodate your staff. We don't want them to take a half a day off work or a whole day off work to go get a vaccine in a neighboring county. You're right here. Let's just go ahead and take care of it. And so some of our numbers include people that don't live here in this county.
Any other questions?
Yes, that was a very, very good report. One thing about restaurants, I've been thinking about this with restaurants, and we know there's some restaurants that just don't really follow the guidelines at all or don't try. And some people say, well, that's up to the customer to know when to go in there. And what I see is that, well, you know, from the Health Department, if someone goes to a restaurant and they have a bad batch of potato salad, and 10 people catch, get food poisoning from the potato salad, they go home and only 10 people got the potato salad, the poisoning from the potato salad, they don't spread it to this one or that one. But if they go to a restaurant that's not following COVID guidelines, and that restaurant gives 10 people, passes a COVID along to 10 people, they go out and can spread it to their family, to their neighbors, to their coworkers, and everything else, it becomes a community problem. And on the chart that David Jenkins sent us, that report last week, the weekly recap press release, I think Wendy set it out, but anyway, still looking at the most, the age group that has the most COVID cases in Stanley County are the 25 to 49-year-olds. And they're the one, they're younger, they're healthier, and they're not going to get it bad and stuff like that. But the thing that concerns me about that group, and I hope they would take this more seriously, is that they just spread it to people outside their group because viruses don't know ages. And it's just constantly see it where, and even gas stations. People don't, they just run into the gas station, and they're not wearing masks. It's okay, what if 10 people, yeah, they're in the nap, what if four or five people that have COVID go into that gas station there? have COVID go into that gas station, they're leaving that crap in the air, and they're making the employees, you know, they're putting the employees of the gas station at risk and other customers coming in. And two concerns coming up, and they say now some of the rates are going down a little bit because with COVID, it seems like after these super-spreader holidays like Thanksgiving, Fourth of July, it's four to six weeks when it peaks because it spreads and spreads and spreads, then it starts coming down again, then we have another one. We've been kind of fortunate this winter across the country where it has not been bad. All of a sudden, the last couple of days, what's going on in the Northeast? Man, it's just bad and people are going to be indoors and they're not going to be outdoors and, you know, it's going to, a lot easier to spread, and then we got the Super Bowl coming up, and if people don't pay attention, you know, that's why I think they keep saying that, because it's, it's going to start building up again. So, I just ask people to please try because the masks don't protect, this mask doesn't protect me as much as it protects people out there. I guess that's not a question, it's a comment, but thank you very much for, that was a very, very thorough report, and thanks for everything you guys do. Brian, thanks for what y'all do, because, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, you're describing everything that you guys are going through. Pretty much one year ago, the Health Department had none of this really to deal with. So, now you guys are dealing with this, plus whatever else you had to do before this. So, I appreciate the efforts, appreciate the efforts of County Manager and everybody just trying to coordinate and stuff like that, and just ask people to just be patient because it's just a numbers game. When you have 20, what, 26 million people have COVID, we have 326 million people. That means less than 10% of our country has got COVID, has received COVID, so it's still got a ways to go around, and the same with the vaccines. We've only had X amount of vaccines out here, next, X amount of people. It's just going to take a while, so, you know, let's keep pounding the, wear the mask and stuff like that. What she, just real quick, what she, what Ms. Layton referenced to earlier, at that can dash, we had put together a "Thank You for Masking Up, North Carolina" Facebook page, and we highlight all the businesses, restaurants, and others that are actually trying to follow COVID, COVID guidelines. We try not to shame people who don't, but we try to, like I said, accentuate the positive and stuff. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ms. Layton?
I want to just post this as a comment for the benefit of people that may choose to watch this on YouTube. Jennifer, thank you for the detailed response, because quite frankly, I'm just going to tell people, go to this meeting and here's where Jennifer starts talking and watch the entire segment, because you laid it out very well. I want to recap some of the important things. If you walk into a restaurant that you're not happy with, don't call us. Don't call the Health Department. If it's in the county, call the sheriff. If it's in the city, call the PD. End of story. Any other phone calls, a waste of a phone call. If you have no jurisdiction, they have no jurisdiction, don't tie up that, that phone, especially the Health Department. They, they're, they're swamped. Call the responsible party, and that's law enforcement, nobody else. Another, Chairman, you commented about it, about people that are going to these larger vaccine events. It's great if you want to do it, please understand, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you do that, you're committing to two trips. We cannot, in our Health Department, give you that vaccine because, just like Director Cohen sent 20,000 doses to Charlotte, she may have sent 7,000 Biontech, 5,000 Pfizer, and 13,000 Moderna. Well, we only have Moderna here, so if you got served there, we can't help you now. You have to go back to Charlotte the second time. And from what I understand, everybody that went to those events got their second appointment scheduled that day. Is that right?
Yes, and I forgot, I failed to mention that we're actually, Commissioner Jordan assisted us, as well as the Emergency Management Department, on securing acuity scheduling software, and it is a bear, but it's a great software system. The bear is trying to transfer everybody over from the previous system. So, we are carefully doing that to make sure no one gets lost in the transition, making a lot of phone calls. There's a lot of back and forth phone calls, but once we get it up and running, it should be smooth sailing when we get to, what month are we in? March. It should be nice and smooth by March, so.
You're using, are you allowing the, the system to do automated communication, if you get the SMS or email or both?
So, another point of frustration for folks was, one of the guidelines in the, in the new vaccine rollout strategy was to use automated messaging, so text messages, call-down systems. We used the reverse 911 system a few weeks ago. When we were notified on a Friday, at the end of a Friday, that we weren't getting vaccine and we had over 600 or 900 people to move, the only thing we could do was send out a reverse 911 to all those phone numbers and say, "Look, please don't come to your appointment. We don't have vaccine at this time." A lot of folks, they said the message didn't go through, and that was just an unfortunate consequence of the system, and so they still showed up. So, we had people stationed in the parking lot to let them know that we'd had to move those. But yes, acuity does allow for that, and our plan is to incorporate that going forward.
Thank you guys for your help, and you too, Director Simpson, and please thank Director Jenkins for me.
And Brian, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Jennifer kind of captured it off.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Okay, next on the agenda is proclamation for National FBLA-PBLA Week. Presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet, you have the proclamation for the National FBLA and PBL Week, for your consideration and approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Shuto, second. Commissioner Alman, any other discussion about this proclamation? If not, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. I think all the commissioners have had time to look over the consent agenda. It's been in your package with an item added. I seek a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Alman, first, and Commissioner Jordan, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. It's time for board comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Farr. I have none at this time. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Alman?
I've just got one quick announcement, I'll bring it from the library board. They've got a new software there. If you have a student that's trying to get the pre-test materials for SAT, LSAT, GRE, whatever, you can now get it free through the, the Stanley County Library website. A super cool resource.
Vice Chairman Jordan, no comments.
Okay, thank you. I have no comments, but I'm going to ask Commissioner Barbie, do you have any?
No, no.
Commissioner Efer?
I just want to say, you know, thank you to the county staff, employees of the Health Department, Brian, you know, Jennifer, all you guys. Thank you. You guys are, you know, trying to shoot a moving target that, you know, is pretty tough. And so, thank you so much for all that you do and all that you continue to do. We get a few phone calls of some, you know, I-rank people every now and then, but we just tell them, "Be patient." You know, patience is tough. Most people want it right now. Again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I do have a comment before we go, Peter. I just gave them Scott's phone number, so. Commissioner Shuto?
Hey, just a couple things real quick. Thank you for coming and explaining the Minority Health Council to us. I really, really appreciate it. That was very informative and stuff. And then, also, in addition to the Health Department, I gave you all a shout-out earlier, but I just want to give a shout-out to the Stanley County Board of, Board of Elections. You know, that's not an easy job, and one of those rare things in politics is having write-in candidates. And over the past, like, four years, they've had like five or six or seven people that went through the write-in ballot to get on, to get their name on the ballot, and that's a lot of work to go through those thousands of signatures to verify and stuff like that. So, just a shout-out to the Board of Elections for all that they do.
Thank you. And I believe Vice Chairman Jordan has a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Shuto, for Ryan, I mean, when you, you mentioned it. The Minority Health Council, one, again, thank you for being here tonight, but I want to say this as candidly as possible in the interest of doing the best we can to get this out there. You guys are important. Our Health Department is swamped is the biggest understatement I could even think of to use for a descriptor for their current status. They don't know individual names and addresses. They don't know who to go look for. If, if, and they're being tasked by the state or threatened by the state with, if you don't breach about 42 shots out of every, every 300 into a specific demographic, we're not going to give you any more vaccine. Quite frankly, I think that's nasty ball, and it shouldn't be played that way. But the entire county is held hostage by that decree. So, we, we, we don't have any more people to go out there and find them if you know them, if they're, if you need to get a message out, there's something that we can do to help do that. We need them to come get vaccinated. Please don't think that we don't care. We just don't have the personnel to necessarily go advertise and know where to begin to hunt them down. But I don't think Stanley County has suffered from anyone being turned away due to class, gender, age, or financial situation. So, I'm not really sure why that's playing, why those politics are being played with this, particularly for vaccine. I think that's dangerous, but please spread the word that we need to get these people vaccinated, but we need their help in identifying who, who they are, and we've got vaccine for them, you know, as it comes in, but they have to let us know. Don't sit back passively and wait to hear from us because we might not know who you are.
Sir.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we need to go into closed session to discuss economic development transaction in accordance with GS 143-318.11A4 and a personnel issue in accordance with GS 143-318.11A6. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Efer, second. Vice Chairman Jordan, all in favor, please say aye. Let's go to the County Managers Conference Room. Now, we're back in the general, general meeting, and we, we need a motion for annual increase.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we approve to give County Manager Lucas the maximum.
Vice Chairman Jordan made the motion to give County Manager Andy Lucas the maximum salary, merit salary increase with a second from Commissioner Farr. End of discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this meeting will be recessed until 9:00 a.m. on February the 12th, which will be for the Board's annual strategic planning retreat, and this retreat will be at Juneberry Ridge, formerly known as Lucky Clay Farm. Everybody have a good evening.